I go, we got about a minute. To get our cells in order. Okay, by my watch, it's 6:30. Let's call to order the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Regular Meeting. It's Thursday, June 2, 2022. At 6:30 PM, we're in the chambers. And we will start with the invocation, Dr. Major Dave Davis. Greetings, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for your service. Join me, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we have much to be thankful for. We give you the praise and glory. Father, we had a wonderful, wonderful crab festival, and we slide right into these summer days. How wonderful. What a great blessing you have lavished upon us. Just now, we lift up our mayor, our assembly members and staff, and for all those who serve behind the scenes. Father, to make our island community a stronger, safer, better place. Father, we ask a special blessing upon our mayor, our council members and staff as they continue to devote themselves to the betterment of our people, our programs, and our properties. Father, there's a great deal on our agendas today and the days ahead. We just ask your continued blessing upon each of them. Thank you, Father, for this great blessing. In Jesus's name, we pray amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are gathered on the traditional homeland of the Sukpiak Alutik people and acknowledge the ten tribes of the Kodiak Alutik region. We recognize the Alutik culture that encircles, excuse me, enriches our community to this day. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Arnt.
Here.
Mr. Delgado.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. Smiley.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Ms. Williams. Mayor Roberts.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Scott?
Yeah. Move to excuse Amy Williams, who is absent due to medical.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Do we have a motion on the approval of agenda? Scott?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. That brings us to citizens' comments. If you wish to make comments tonight, you make comments. We have public hearings on a number of items in which you can make your comments if they pertain to those items. If you wish to make comments outside of those items, you're more than welcome to do so. Tonight, we have a number of ordinance up for a public hearing, including the approval of the budget, the approval of the certified rule, approval of an amendment to the Revenue and Finance Chapter, and also on record, approval of the Records Management Ordinance, and also an ordinance to write off personal property as delinquent. Other than that, if you'd like to make comments at the General Comments for Citizens, please step up, sign in, turn on the mic, state your name for the record. If you wish to call in, the number is 907-486-3231, or toll-free, 1-855-492-9202. Please address the assembly as a whole, and please keep your comments civil. Thank you. Okay, seeing none, we will move on. We have no awards or presentations. Anybody on the assembly have committee report? Seeing none, we'll move right into the public hearings. The first one item up is ordinance number FY 2022-18, and that's writing off personal property delinquent taxes on accounts that are not collectible. Do I have an ordinance? Scott?
Move to adopt ordinance number FY 2022-18. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Do we have a staff report?
Good evening. This is the fourth time you'll see this item. This will be a regular item annually for cleanup of accounts that staff has considered uncollectible for various reasons. We do take those cases to small claims court that we can. We do research and try to collect these as we can. There are 11 accounts for personal property, one account for accounts receivable. This represents $320,600 of value and 0.19% of our personal property accounts. Any questions, I'm welcome to answer them.
First, we'll close the regular meeting, open the public hearing and the discussion. Anything to make a statement, say, or 285529202. If you're here, turn the microphone on, and if you're calling in, please turn your listening device down so we don't get feedback. Thank you. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll open it up to discussion and assembly. Anybody have anything further to say on these items? With that, then can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, six zero.
Okay, that brings us to public hearing on ordinance number FY 2022-19, amending Borough Code Title II, dealing with records management. Scott?
Move to adopt ordinance number, excuse me, move to adopt ordinance number FY 2022-19. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Do we have a staff report? Please, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the assembly. The clerk's office staff evaluated the current records destruction process and wishes to eliminate steps to increase efficiency. It has been the practice to require assembly authorization by resolution in order for the clerk's office to dispose of records. When the assembly adopts or amends the records retention schedule, it establishes full authority in advance to periodically destroy, transfer, microfilm, or take other authorized actions relative to borrow records. Eliminating the resolution process will expedite the destruction of records and will provide flexibility for the clerk's office to destroy records at any time of the year. This change will still keep the assembly informed since the proposed code amendment requires the clerk's office to provide a report of the records that are to be destroyed and report any obsolete records that are destroyed during the preceding year. This ordinance clarifies the role of the attorney and the department directors in the process. This also addresses records that are found to have administrative value and are requested to be retained beyond their retention period. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may. Thank you.
Okay, first, let's close the regular meeting and open the public hearing. And again, if you wish to make comments on this, you can step up to the podium, sign in, and state your name for the record. Make sure the mic's on. If you're calling in, the number is 907-486-3231, or toll-free, 1-855-492-9202. And if you're calling in, please turn off or turn down your listening device to prevent feedback. So we'll open for public comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment hearing and open it to the assembly for discussion. Anybody have any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, six zero.
That brings us to the next item for public hearing, which is ordinance number FY 2022-20, amending Title III Revenue. Do we have a motion? Scott?
Move to adopt ordinance number FY 2022-20. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Staff report, Roxanne.
Well, I'd just like to thank Deputy Presiding Officer Williams again for her work with staff. What this change would do is allow the borough manager to have a local preference option regarding procurement contracts that come before the borough, and obviously, the local preference for dollar amounts that would need to go to the assembly would remain. So your consideration of this is appreciated.
With that, we will close the regular meeting, open the public comment section, and again. Uh, yeah.
Oh, we've got an amendment.
Oh, yes, we should make the amendment first. Go ahead, Scott.
Thank you. Move to amend ordinance number FY 2022-20 by deleting the words "in excess of $15,000" in lines 47 and 48, which is on the yellow paper.
Second.
I didn't know that was my job. Well, you've been doing so good.
Well, you're both named Scott, you know.
I need a raise.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. This is basically cleaning up our ordinances, making them all jive with each other for the public's comment. Let's have a vote on the amendment before we open it up to public comment.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, six zero.
So the motion as amended is open for a public hearing. Boink. Again, if you're here, you can step up to the podium, sign in, turn on the mic, and state your name for the record. Calling in, it's 907-486-3231, or toll-free, 1-855-492-9202. And if you're calling in, please turn off your listening device so we don't have feedback. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll open it back up to the assembly. Anybody else on the assembly wish to address this for the fourth time? No. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, six zero.
That brings us to public hearing on ordinance number FY 2023-01, and that's receiving the 2022 Certified Real and Personal Property Tax Rule and levying ad valorem property taxes for tax year 2022, consisting of all area-wide taxes in service districts. Do I have a motion? Scott?
Move to adopt ordinance number FY 2023-1. Second.
Motion and a second. Staff report.
Evening. So what you have in front of you is the certified value the assessor is determined for the Kodiak Island Borough and how that basically shakes out for service areas and their mill rates and collection, and for the mill rate for the area-wide. This area-wide rate is based on the manager's budget as amended by staff, which is version two for this one and for the upcoming ordinance for the appropriation. So my recommendation was if you, you're gonna have to go back like you did a couple years ago. If you change, if you follow version two on this ordinance, and the next one you go with version three, then you're gonna have to go back and amend this one for the version three in the upcoming ordinance. So in the packet, there's the original, the version two, which is manager's budget amended by staff, and then version three, which is Assembly Member Arnt and Turner's version. Same setup in the next ordinance for the appropriation. The original, the manager's as amended by staff is version two, and Scott and James's version is version three. That's probably clear.
Okay, James?
I'd like to propose a, I guess I'm gonna forget how to say it, but I'd like to move this item D to follow item E. Postpone until after item E?
Maybe the proper term would be laid on the table.
There you go.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion or objections? Roll call vote, please.
Okay, this is to lay this ordinance on the table, and you're gonna have to pick it up later. Okay. So, Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes. Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, six zero.
Okay, then that brings us to the ordinance number FY 2023, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2023 and appropriation, appropriating from all borough funds. Scott?
Move to adopt ordinance number FY 2023-2.
Second.
Staff report, please.
So you could just replay what I said on the previous audits for this one, and you're good.
I should say for the public's comments that version two and version three are, there's no difference in what's being appropriated. It's just how it's being shifted around, and we're not, in both cases, mill rates don't change. I'll say that for the public's knowledge.
Are you saying we're shifty?
We're shifty. It's a shell game. Do we have a motion for amendment?
Yes. Move to amend ordinance number FY 2023-2 by substitution with version three. Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'm gonna ask either Scott or James to just encapsulate briefly the major changes or the differences in the two for the public.
I can start with it, and let me get to.
Quickly, I say.
Yeah, the quick, the quick version is it includes, version three includes all of version two, and then some of the things that were missed, like the $7,500 for the building official account. There was some for the animal control that was in there, the increase that we had gotten. And then it has the, right now, the elimination of the cameras until such time as we get a real plan. But the vehicles, there was two vehicles in there, and we'd be looking at other ways of doing it. And what it does is take the money and shift it into a contingency account under general services. So, James, is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
So it increases our legislative budget about 20,000, 28,000. It decreases information technology. It changes the building official. It increases general administration. It increases economic development. It increases animal control, and it, if I can get to it, it decreases. Sorry. It decreases building and grounds by about 210, 215,000 in item 220, I should say. And that is all I can remember.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is the money in the fund 220 stays in the fund there, so.
Right.
Which is building and grounds. It doesn't move.
And there's also a 500,000 or 600,000 decrease in facility fund.
Right.
Right.
In the what fund?
Facilities fund.
Okay.
Renew and replacement.
Contingencies. We'll see what the governor does.
Okay, with that explanation, we will close the regular meeting, and we'll open it to public comment again. If you're going to call in, it's 907-486-3231, toll-free, 1-855-492-9202. If you're here, please sign in, state your name for the record. If you call in, please state your name for the record and turn down your listening device to cut out feedback. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll open it back to the assembly for discussion. Scott?
With that, I would add, you know, that detail under the legislative, for the public's information, is it raises the stipend for the mayor and assembly members. It raises the mayor from currently 500 to 700 a month, and it raises the assembly members from 300 to 500 a month. Also included in there was the reduction that the lobbyists took in the current year, budget of $5,000. And just because it was looking to be a bad year, 2022 budget. And hopefully, we'll get the shortfall on the school debt reimbursement. We'll see what the governor does. Legislature passed it, and it's in the governor's hands, and we'll see there. One of the things, too, is it moves the vehicles out of the general fund. And what we're doing is putting that money in contingencies, but possibly purchasing it. It had two, two smaller vehicles, the SUVs, be it the escapes that needed to be replaced that are 20-plus years old. And I think that we really need to get three of them. We originally had four. We got another one that's about that old, so if we get, get three, we can, we can get by there. Took a truck out also, and we'll, we'll work on that. But it's not, it's basically giving us some options on there. And James had mentioned the economic development, the building official, which was the 7,500 matching, city matches 7,500, borough matches 7,500. Total of 15,000 to use for pre-engineering. That would be beneficial to primarily homeowners coming in for additions. And we had the building official here addressing some of that, being covered decks and the like on there. Part of the issue had been they had some hold downs on containers and that, but the code changed, so it needs to be redone on there, too, and updated. So, anyway, open to any, any suggestions on that or more, more in-depth explanation if anybody would like. Oh, on the, on the fund 200 area, that was basically reducing the amount for the two closed schools in Carlock and Larson Bay. It stays in the building and the grounds, fund balance there. But while we are determining what we're gonna do with those, those schools. Thank you.
Anybody else on the assembly wish, have questions or wish to make comments? Jared?
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in support of this amendment for a few reasons. One, I do think that it does honor the manager and the staff budget that they put together. That's, that was something that was really important to me as we're doing this. It addresses some of the goals that are kind, that are specific to the assembly. As Assembly Member Arnt spoke to the economic development, some of the legislative items are important to us. I also think that the, the adjustments in the amendment address some of the political realities that, that we face with, so moving, moving money into contingencies with, in the general administration budget, I think is prudent for us. And then with the expectation of ARPA, another loss of income fund support. I, the video cameras were mentioned, and security is, security is extremely important with some of the things I've been reading and hearing about security challenges with upcoming elections. I think cameras are gonna be very important, but there is, there is still money in, we can start working on, on that plan, and we can still get that going. So, so those are the things that I was, that I was looking at, and so I'll be supporting this amendment.
Thank you, Jared. Anybody else? Okay, then we've had the public hearing. Let's have the vote, please.
Public hearing now, right? Or after the amendment vote?
That's right, we did the public, we did.
We gotta do the.
We've had so many public hearings, they all run into one.
So we got the vote on the amendment, then the.
All right, yes, we should.
I haven't taken the roll on the amendment yet.
Right.
Yeah, so we'll take the roll.
Call on the amendment, yes.
And then we'll open up public.
Amendment, and then we'll open up public hearings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad you're keeping up with us.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Art?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, four yes, two no's.
With that, we'll open a public hearing on the motion as amended. We are amended to version three. And so we'll close the regular meeting, and we'll open it to the public. If you're here, please come to the podium, sign in, state your name for the record, and make sure the microphone's turned on. If you're calling in, it's nine oh seven four eight six three two three one, toll-free one eight five five four nine two nine two zero two. And if you're calling in, please turn off your listening device so we don't have feedback and we can actually hear you. Thank you. Seeing no public comment, we'll close that, and we'll open it back to the assembly. Any further comments? Jeff?
Yeah, I've spent the last couple of weeks going through this budget and going through the manager's budget with staff's amendments. And, and there's a lot of things in this amendment that I support and I like and make a lot of sense to me and I, I think are, are good. But I also believe that we hired a manager to, to manage the borough in that regard and to present a budget. And I believe the manager brought forward a balanced budget. Staff made some amendments to that budget in version two. And I want to support the work of staff and the work of the manager on this. And it's a balanced budget with no increase to the mill rate. When I hear we have vehicles that are twenty-plus years old, I don't want a delay in purchasing those. And yeah, there's ARPA money in our possession, but it's been in our possession and it's still sitting. And so I, I, as much as I'd like to support this version, because there, like I said, there are things I agree with, I, I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else? Joe?
I echo many of the sentiments just expressed. I too, I've been answering budgets before, and I have people do budgets for me. I made them myself. I, I think that I've always trusted the people that I've hired to do a good budget. I think that we did a good job here as well. I do like some of the, I, I agree with some of the amendments that were discussed, but I think in the end of the day, I, I would vote for the manager's budget. But I appreciate the work that you guys have done getting this amended one ready.
Anyone else? Scott Smiley?
I was originally opposed to cutting the cameras for IT, but I do think we need to have a good plan for that. I think that Mr. Griffith brings up a good point about the elections, and we probably want to have cameras at them just in case. And I am now happy to vote for this because the cameras are more complicated than I had thought originally.
Anybody else? With that, we are going to vote on the motion as amended.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Art?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, four yes, two no's.
With that, I'd entertain a motion to take ordinance number FY twenty twenty-three oh one off the table.
So moved.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. So we are back to.
Mr. Mayor, I need a roll call vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call vote, please.
This is taking it from the table. Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Art?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, six zero.
All right, did we put the ordinance on the, it is on the table because it's a second reading. The ordinance that's on the table is the original ordinance. Do we have a motion from, to amend? Scott?
Yeah, basically, version one is, is on there. So with that, move to amend ordinance number FY twenty twenty-three oh one by substitution with version three.
We have a motion and a second. Simply put, we are matching the, the budget that we just passed with how we're going to collect the money and allocate it. Is that correct, Dora?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So with that, we will go to public hearing. We'll close the regular motion and open the public hearing. If you're here, you can walk to the mic, sign in, state your name for the record. Make sure the mic's on. You can call in at four eight, nine oh seven four eight six three two three one, or toll-free at one eight five five four nine two nine two zero two. If you call in, please turn your listening device off to prevent feedback, and please state your name clearly for the record. Seeing no comments, we'll close it. Open the hearing back up. Any further comments from the assembly? Everybody know what we're doing here, right? Okay. With that, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please, on the amendment.
Mr. Art?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, five yes, one no.
Okay, now.
We're back on the main motion.
On the main motion. So now.
As amended.
As amended. But we need a vote on the main motion as amended. Anybody wish to have any further comments? With that, Nova, roll call, please.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Art?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, six zero.
Okay, with that, we are done with the public hearings, and we'll move on to the manager's report. Roxanne?
First and foremost, thank you so much for your consideration of all of the matters tonight and for all of the clarity. And we will be happy to go forward with all of this clarity. And I also have several other updates regarding the settlement agreement that the assembly considered. I just wanted to assure you that the document was signed by me, which you gave me the authority to do, and that was delivered to the agency. So that matter should be closed. We have an issue with the KFRC because, so a couple of years ago, they decided that we would start funding the receptionist position for the Fisheries Research Center. And what staff would like to do, because we don't have a heck of a lot of money to put toward this, is create a part-time receptionist position for KFRC. But unfortunately, KFRC is not willing to support that, and they would like a full-time person and for us to pay for that, even though that would be quite exorbitant for us to do. So what we're considering at this point amongst staff is bringing this before the assembly, so the assembly can weigh in on what you wish for staff to do, if it is to fund a full-time position or a part-time position based on the funding that we have. But we'll give you more information about that definitely going forward. I'm also working on the contract for the clerk, and I'll be working with the attorney on that. And then we'll be getting a revised document with track changes back to the clerk for her consideration. And then anything that isn't agreed upon between the clerk and the attorney and I, we would bring forward to the assembly for the assembly to figure out what you want to do. So I just wanted to give you an update that that is ongoing. Hopefully, I'll be making an offer, a successful offer for a community development director position. So we agreed to a person that is very qualified, and I hope they're still interested. And we'll see if they would like to visit Kodiak first before making a decision, but just wanted to let you know that that is moving forward. I'll also be working with Seema and James regarding code enforcement policy improvements. And I really want to thank the assembly's ability to be receptive to the information that we provided during the work session and the understanding about code enforcement. We'll be looking forward to helping with that. I also got consensus from the directors regarding a front desk justification document that I'll first deliver to the assembly to see if you have any feedback on. This is justifying why we have a front desk and why that will continue. And if you don't have any concerns, then I would love to issue that to the city council and to the, also the city manager, or anybody else that the assembly would like for that to go to. I just wanted to let you know, too, that Senator Murkowski issued in her congressional-directed spending eight million dollars for the Anton Larson Bay Road Extension Project. So that's just a heads up that that's what Senator Murkowski included in her request. And I'm working with staff because I think, and Dora and I, think that one thing we need to do is come with some clarity about the difference between ARPA and lost revenue. And as staff will be working on priorities that we can bring back to the assembly regarding how to spend that money, also with consideration for infrastructure funding that will be coming through. And then staff is also taking a really good look at ways that we can qualify for and apply for the recent announcement of safe streets and roads for all. So, boy, there's a lot of stuff that we'll be working on to try to hopefully get better funding for our borough. I just wanted to let you know that I've heard no word from Kodiak College, unfortunately, even after Amy said that we would get the document back. So I'm going to try one more time, but I haven't heard anything. I really hope to close that out. I submitted information on the cost of managing the Larson Bay School to the Larson Bay Mayor, and also I had a good conversation with the tribal president, because he's really interested in understanding more about what we'll do with that. And he was, he said he was even potentially interested in the tribe purchasing that from the borough. So we'll have some options to bring forward for the assembly to consider for that matter. I'm working on staffing issues. Just to generally state what they are, one is responsible credit card management for your borough credit card, and also some work scheduling issues for an employee. I had a really great meeting with the Kodiak Island Housing Authority today, and I just thought you might like to hear that they'll be pulling together a housing summit. So I just wanted you to be aware that that's some great work that they'll be doing that I'll be happy to participate in, and I'm sure you all will get invitations to, in the future. And tomorrow, I'll be meeting with the hospital administrators, and then also I'll be attending my first housing committee meeting. And we'll additionally be working on some hospital lease documents, and then also the borough building lease with the city, because the city has said that they only want to continue their lease month to month, which was the latest information. And I just wondered if the assembly, since you are, have approved the animal control contract, if you guys wanted me to get information on justification regarding the increase, or should I not? Because it was a pretty substantial increase. I'm seeing one shaking head of no. Okay, I will not proceed. I just wanted to let you know, too, that I, hopefully you think thoughtfully, decided not to attend the International City Managers Association Executive Board meeting. I'm on that executive board, but the thought of taking four flights with a potential pilot strike and pilot shortages just didn't seem prudent to me for three days of meetings in Florida. So I'm, I'm happy to be here, but I'll unfortunately have to get up at three-thirty in the morning to attend one of those meetings just through the phone. And I just want to thank everybody who helped out with Crab Fest, and also everyone who's helping out with in-person voting, and to remind people to please vote. And I'll be happy to answer any questions the assembly has.
I've got a couple of quick comments. KFRC and the receptionists. I remember when we did the lease, and Dora could probably throw something at me if I'm wrong, they didn't want anything to do with paying for that receptionist. And now, all of a sudden, they want a full-time receptionist. It's up to the assembly what they want to do about that, but I know what I want to do about that.
And, go ahead, Scott. What I, what I remember, Bill, is they, they, they said it was unnecessary.
Yes. Scott Smiley?
Well, it goes back pretty far, back into the nineties. And at that time, at that time, the touch tanks down in the base, there was a person who would guide tours around that, mostly for kids. And it worked out very well. And then there was shortage of funding for NOAA and shortage of funding for the borough. So things went all haywire then. But I'm not sure who you're talking to, but there are people who are supportive of this kind of thing. And one of them runs the Alaska Science Center in Juneau. So if you want his name, I'll give it to you. Yeah.
My other comments were on the community development candidate. You should have had him here today, man. Look at this weather. There's no way, no way he would say no, or she, whatever.
With a big salmon in there.
Yeah, right. We could rig that up somehow.
Easily.
And the last thing is on the receptionist. I think in this day and age, it's prudent to have controlled access to your, your borough buildings. I know when I go anywhere around the country and go into a municipal building, there's only one way in, and there's always somebody there to ask you who and what. And in a lot of places, like in Phoenix, you go through a metal detector, and they have armed guards standing there. So things are crazy. And I think, I think justification is easy on that one. Anybody else on the assembly have any comments on the manager's report? Okay, that brings us to messages from the borough mayor. Hey, it's sunny and warm, and if we get done fast here, we can still go home, sit on our deck, and just enjoy life. So it, the weather here is beautiful. It was a great Crab Fest, and I'm happy that we got the budget done, and it was rather painless. I think we did a good job. I think the amendments that were made were thoughtful and took care of some of the, some of the shortfalls. With that, we will move on to new business, new business. The first item up is resolution number FY twenty twenty-three oh three, amending the Kodiak Island Borough records retention schedule and central filing system. We have a motion, Scott?
Move to adopt resolution number FY twenty twenty-three dash three. Second.
Motion is second. Staff report, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to refer to our deputy clerk, and she also serves as the records management team leader for the report. Thank you.
Thank you. So the Borough Clerk's Office has determined the need to revise the current retention schedule to comply with and consider recent and existing laws and regulations to reflect industry best practices and update, cross-reference the borough code sections to meet the present needs of the office. The revisions to the current retention schedule for borough records set out in this resolution is limited to those in the clerk's office category. We're just starting with the clerk's office. And the remaining categories of the records will keep in the same retention schedule previously approved until changed by future resolution. So right now, our records retention schedule is very disorganized and confusing because of all the repealed items. And our goal is to not only clean it up as far as reforming goes, but also reflect the current practice of the office, which is a lot different than a few years ago. The clerk's office will be the start basis of this retention schedule revision for other departments. So we're gonna start here and then move forward. Not sure which department will be next, but we will make sure that the same series changes will be mirrored across all departments. As you can see, the last comprehensive As you can see, the last comprehensive amendment, which included all departments, was done in 2014 through resolution number nineteen ninety-five oh one H. And I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions on this retention schedule? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arndt.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes six zero.
Okay, we have no ordinances for introductions, so that brings us to other items. And the first other item up is authorization to purchase leachate scale control pads for the leachate treatment plant. Do I have a motion? Scott.
Okay. Move to authorize the Borough Manager to purchase leachate scale control pads in the amount of fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Second.
We have a motion to second. Staff report.
I'm going to try to slow down this time. So this is for the purchase of leachate scale control pads to help reduce the scale buildup that is currently inside the leachate treatment plant. We've been moving forward with the new pretreatment system and building project that will help with the removal of the scale from the influenza variation and a clarifier before it enters the bioreactor. The pretreatment project is planned to be completed by the end of next year. The new pretreatment system will help with treating the incoming leachate but does not address the existing scaling problem throughout the plant. This is where the scale control pads come into play. These pads can help, these pads can be placed on the outside of the pumps and/or piping to help decrease and reduce the scaling on the inside of these surfaces. The pads produce electrically generated surface active catalyst effect in the water that neutralizes natural charge of suspended solids. This then allows the calcium carbonate to adhere to the suspended solids inside of the pumps and piping. These solids are then removed by our belt filter press. It is also claimed that the pads will also remove the existing buildup. With the amount of issues we are facing from the scaling and the costs associated with purchasing new pumps and piping, I am hoping that we'll be able to give these pads a try. This does not eliminate the scale, but it makes it more manageable, it makes it a more manageable form to remove from our system. The company also states that if we are not satisfied with our purchase, that they will buy back the products at a seventy-five to eighty percent refund. Staff's recommendation is to authorize the manager to purchase leachate control pads in the amount of fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Scott?
Yeah, I would say for the public there, one of the things that I really liked about it was we can get our money back if it don't work.
Most of our money back.
Most of it.
Most of it, a good chunk of it.
Which is, very seldom do you find those deals. So they're, they're real happy with the performance of their product in order to have that kind of a guarantee on it. So it's, I feel it's, it's worth, worth a try. Thank you.
Any other comments? Scott Smiley.
This is due to lye being used by the city with their solid waste that they dump in the dump, is that right?
That's correct. I was told like a long time ago that there would be a significant amount of lye added to their bio solids that was then disposed at our landfill before the composting facility was constructed.
And so the city has stopped using lye.
Correct.
But we're still seeing a problem.
Yep.
Is the problem diminishing?
Not since I've been here.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
And Mr. Smiley. Dave Conrad's not here tonight, but it's a landfill, sanitary landfill, not a dump.
Thank you, we were pretty fancy.
I didn't say that last week.
Any further discussion from the Assembly? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arndt.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to item number two under other items. That's consideration for the extension of contract number FY twenty eighteen dash twenty-six A with U.S. Ecology for Household Hazardous Waste Disposal. Scott.
Move to authorize the manager to extend contract number FY two thousand eighteen dash twenty-six A, Household Hazardous Waste Disposal with U.S. Ecology. Second.
Motion to second. Staff report, please.
This spring two thousand twenty household hazardous waste event was the last year of our original contract with NRC, also known as U.S. Ecology. We have the option for a five-year extension. The original contract that's found in your packet outlines the price increase if we agree to the terms. This is a time and material contract for work completed during the household hazardous waste event. This event is for both residents and commercial businesses of Kodiak. This year, U.S. Ecology sent out a letter informing clients of an increase in energy costs due to global conditions impacting all costs. U.S. Ecology is increasing their energy security insurance and compliance fee by nineteen percent. The increase will be calculated based upon the total of any invoice excluding taxes, state, and local fees. This is not surprising due to the rise in almost all products. I compared the five-year extension price plus the nineteen percent increase for different materials listed on the contract, and even with the nineteen percent increase, the material in the contract is still less than many companies online. We have been working with U.S. Ecology since two thousand eighteen, and I believe that they are a critical part in our, and why our events run smoothly and are successful. Their staff are very knowledgeable and proper disposal and are willing to answer all questions, even questions that don't pertain to the event. The partnership that has been created between U.S. Ecology and the Kodiak Island Borough has greatly benefited this community. Staff's recommendation is to authorize the manager to extend contract number two zero one eight dash twenty-six A, Household Hazardous Waste Disposal with U.S. Ecology.
Thank you. Any further comments on this? We've discussed it in work session. Scott Smiley.
Yeah, I was trained as a biologist, and this use of the term ecology makes me wince. But other than that, it's a good idea.
Anybody else? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arndt.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to the last item under other items and its consideration for the purchase of a new two thousand twenty-two dozer and rebuild current two thousand six dozer for the landfill. Scott.
Move to authorize the manager to award the purchase to NC Machinery in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars with the contract number to be determined later, under the State of Alaska NAPSO contract, and to pursue rebuilding the two thousand six dozer. And for the public, that NS, NAPSO is basically like a GSA contract. Second.
Thank you. Staff report.
In two thousand five, the Borough purchased a two thousand six CAT dozer with a waste handling package to perform a variety of tasks at the landfill that includes stabilizing and developing slopes, compacting the construction demolition waste, pushing up rock used for cover material, spreading daily cover material over municipal waste, pushing the metals pile, maintaining and building roads and ramps, ice removal, and when the baler is down for maintenance, it is used to compact the municipal waste during loose fill operations. April of this year, while processing construction debris, the engine went down. Burke and came to the site to determine that the engine was locked up and it will need to be rebuilt slash replaced along with fixing other pieces of the equipment. This machine is fifteen-plus years old. Staff found the State of Alaska NAPSO contract, which outlines multiple pieces of Caterpillar equipment at a discounted price. NC Machinery holds this contract. The CAT D seven and D six dozers were reviewed to determine which would be a better fit for the needs of the landfill. The added weight of the D seven machine will provide a better compaction and will be the best choice for the work required of this piece of equipment. Price is eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. You can see the quote labeled two six two eight five three hyphen zero one in your packet, which is page forty-five of forty-nine, for the breakdown of price and the discount. Staff also looked into the cost for a CAT warranty rebuild on the two thousand six dozer. A verbal estimate was given by NC Machinery for the two thousand six dozer at three hundred thousand plus shipping costs. This includes the rebuild of the engine, powertrain, transmission, undercarriage. Again, this is an estimate, so final price may vary. Staff's recommendation is to authorize the manager to award contract to NC Machinery in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars under the State of Alaska NAPSO contract and to pursue the rebuilding of the two thousand six dozer with NC Machinery. Having two operational dozers would be beneficial if and when equipment goes down. This would allow us to not stop or slow down normal operation when dozers or issues arise.
Thank you. Scott.
Yeah, one of the things with, with having the two dozers, too, for instance, right now with the one dozer down, we're renting and incurring an expense there. So I see this being a positive thing and, and the other thing is the, the price, as Jenna said, that NC gave us sight unseen. They haven't seen it. And so till they get it, you know, I, I'm thinking it could be cheaper. They've given us their, their high end on there. So it's a low-hour machine, so I'm, I'm confident it should come in a little cheaper. So anyway, I just feel, you know, we've, we've doubled up on loaders, we've doubled up on excavators, we doubled up on trucks. We need to double up on the dozer. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any other comments? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arndt.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes six zero.
That concludes our business for this evening, so we'll open it back up to citizens' comments. If you're here and wish to make a comment, come to the podium, sign in, turn on the mic and state your name for the record. You can call in at nine oh seven four eight six three two three one or toll-free one eight five five four nine two nine two zero two. If you're calling in, please turn off your listening device to prevent feedback, and please state your name clearly. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on. Assembly members' comments. Jeff.
Yeah, I would just like to thank the manager and thank staff for their efforts on preparing a balanced budget. I'd also like to say thank you to Assemblymember Arndt and Turner for the thought they put into the amended budget and the time they dedicated to doing that, so I appreciate everyone's efforts on that. Thank you.
Scott Smiley.
Well, it's really something to come back to Kodiak today. Unbelievable. Thank you.
Scott Arndt.
No further comments. Thank you.
Jared Griffin.
I just want to double down on what I had mentioned earlier about security and especially around election time. It's, they're at, it's starting, it's sounding not necessarily scary, but I think it's, this is going to be probably the most stressful and maybe at times chaotic election period. And so we need to do what we can to protect and assure our staff and volunteers, our buildings. We want to, we want to make this safe and, and easy for, for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Joe Delgado.
I have no comment. Thank you.
James Turner.
A couple of things. Thank you to staff for putting up with my craziness. Thank you for the, thank you to the Clerk's Office for doing the election, special election that we have going on right now. Hopefully, we get enough votes to make Kodiak proud. And then the last, but not least, we've gotten through another budget process, and my hope is that next year, we will drop the mail rate.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of announcements, and first one, this is probably the easiest budget we've ever passed and the quickest. It's one hour from start to finish. The next Assembly work session is scheduled for Thursday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-two, at six thirty in these chambers. And the next regular meeting is Thursday, June sixteenth, at six thirty in the Borough Assembly Chambers.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? We're adjourned.